Alderman Volmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohen.
Present.
Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Carter. Twenty-two present.
Our quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Reverend Watson of Maple Temple.
Let us pray. Gracious God, heavenly Father, as we continue to look on this year in celebration of 250 years that you have preserved and sustained our great city, we acknowledge what the Holy Scripture have said. Accept the Lord keep the city, the watchman watch it but in vain. For your everlasting divine care we give thanks. We pray for our community at large. Keep us faithful to the task of improving the quality of life for all citizens in the community. Pull out your Spirit upon us and join us together in greater commitment to our city, in greater justice to our citizens, and in greater faith than you. Enlighten the mind of this great assembly and their staff that they may work together to remove inequalities, to reduce friction, and to renounce prejudice. By the strength of your Spirit may we build a community reflective of your glory. And to your loving arms we again commit our great city, our community, our family, and our hearts. Amen.
That's a great prayer. Suspend what our regular order of business take up our courtesy resolution calendar and move for adoption our courtesy resolution calendar in its second about Alderman from the 20th. Alderman from the 23rd, like to approach the dais. I brought a friend. Chief Mason, if you can. Diane, you can come up too if you like, and Rhonda? Today I was given the honor of being able to present this resolution to the chief who actually is the one who made me quit wearing ties and dressing like the way I dress. He doesn't, I came from the car wash, so I dressed like a car wash guy all the time. And he was, and I was also advised by Steve Gargoli that they're really good karaoke singers. Even though it's not in the resolution. I can tell you, I sat on the airport commission for three years and I learned a lot from the chief and I'm really honored to be able to do this resolution. And he has a lot about his service. He's retired out of the military, out of the Army. He's been 26 years out at the airport and the chief for the last eight years. And a friend, Steve, wherever he's at, is. There he is. He's the chairman of transportation. So what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna set this aside. We also have. Make sure I got, make sure I got the right one. We also, from the mayor, and I'm gonna let Steve take care of this one. It's gonna be a split day in the city of St. Louis, so. We just have to, the writing's so small, these guys have done so much that. We're not much of a show.
No, 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 no. And I'll just finish it up. I now therefore Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of St. Louis, do hereby proclaim March 14th, 2014, as Colonel Paul Mason Day in the City of St. Louis. Congratulations.
Oh yeah, Rhonda, you're next. We also have the Airport Director with us, and she is doing a phenomenal job at the airport. Rhonda, would you like to?
You know, when I came to the airport, lots of things we worry about and lots of things we have been changing. But one of the things we never have to worry about is the safety and security of our airport. And that's thanks to Chief Mason after 26 years. I can tell you, it's one of the few things I never worry about when I go to sleep at night is are we safe and are our passengers and are the employees in the airport safe? And I can always answer that with a positive, yes, they are. And that's due to the credit of Paul and his team. So many thanks, Paul, on behalf of all of the airport staff for what you've done and the level that you've lifted us to. Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Further discussion? Also wanna add my thanks, the thanks from my family and friends and other members of the board and people who could not be here today to thank you for the job that you've done with the airport. You have done a phenomenal job out there and we have been lucky to have had you for the time we've had you out there. I had an opportunity to tour some of the things that you've done with the robots and all this stuff. And we have a world-class sophisticated public safety system out at the airport like you would not believe. And it's because of the chief. So chief, we really thank you for that. This resolution from the Board of Aldermen is an official act of the board, alright? And what it does is it cements in time some of your many contributions on behalf of the residents of the city of St. Louis. So 100, 200 years from now, when you research the records of the city, you will find the name Paul Mason amongst those records. And they will know, they will be able to read about this day that we paused in our deliberations to recognize you. So I indeed have enjoyed my time with you. I wish I was as cool as you guys are. He is, this guy, don't let him fool you. Right now, he's dressed in his official uniform, but he is one cool guy. He can tell you how to dress. So congratulations, chief, and congratulations to your lovely wife also. And enjoy your retirement.
I came to St. Louis 26 years ago and I didn't know a soul in the city of St. Louis. I am now proud to say St. Louis is my home. This is a wonderful place to live. The people are friendly. The businesses are accommodating. And I'm proud to call St. Louis my home.
I was standing one step above Rhonda and barely as tall as her over here. So, so thank you for all the work that you do at the airport. I really appreciate it. You know, in the five years I've been here, I've only done four resolutions from the dais. Today is five and six. Today, the resolution I'm doing. Is for Johnny Rabbit. For the older group in here, me included. I remember Johnny Rabbit from the old Lambid to the Rabbit Show on KXOK. And I can remember that there was no FM radio until we get FM converters. And you would listen to the radio and on Sunday, it was just religious stuff and it would go dead at like 6 o'clock. So we always looked forward to listening to Ron. Ron had so many accomplishments. They wouldn't fit on wasn't one resolution where they had to do two or three. His charitable acts. He, you know, started, he's been at other radio stations here in St. Louis, KXOK. He's currently with KMOX. And I really felt the need to wanna honor him. We also have a proclamation from the mayor. So this is kind of a dual day. It's gonna be Chief Paul Mason, but it's also gonna be considered and known as Johnny Rabbit Day in the city of St. Louis. I think, see if they're gonna be Johnny Rabbit or Ron Hells, I gotta see how he did it. But either way, for those of us that know Johnny Rabbit and have been around awhile, he's a really cool guy. He introduced the Beatles. He managed the Bee Gees and a whole bunch of other groups and worked for Columbia Records and, like I said, if, when we got all those accomplishments, we had to cut a lot of them down because they just wouldn't fit on a resolution. So I'm gonna let these guys take over. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 14th.
Well, it's good to know that Alderman Vaccaro remembers him also. I thought I was probably one of the only people here that actually heard Johnny Rabbit, Rabbit to the Rabbit from KMO, KXOK, up on North Kings Highway and remember trying to go up there and see if he could blab it to the rabbit in person. But, you know, I guess there are other people of my vintage. And gee, I don't know how you got older because I sure didn't.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Johnny, we wanna thank you for all your works, you know, in radio and in the music business and entertainment business that has helped to put St. Louis on the map. You are a mainstay and icon in St. Louis and we cannot thank you enough for all the work that you've done. We're gonna give you an opportunity to talk now.
Thank you.
Well, I don't have a beautiful outfit like the chief, but I have my hat to make it official. You don't see many of these anywhere. I can't believe they let me in City Hall with this. I thought they were gonna throw me up. But thanks to all of you for all of the work you do day in and day out to make our city the great city it is and the greater city it is destined to become thanks to the work of the Aldermen here in St. Louis. And there's a guy, a lot of people I hope remember Jack Benny. Jack Benny from radio and TV. Now, this is a quote from Jack Benny. I feel the same way. He said, "I really don't deserve these proclamations, but I've got arthritis and I don't deserve that either." And just to say thank you for these honors isn't enough. So after the automatic session, which I know is gonna be a long one today, the drinks are gonna be on me for everyone at Bethis on Olive Street. Oh, they're closed? I tried, I tried. Well, thank you. Thank you for this great honor. Have a great day. And I think it's truly thank you, though I must introduce my wife Gwen because without her, heck, I don't know where I'd be or what I'd be doing. Thank you all very much.
Tell you, he has a beautiful radio voice. He even, Alderman from the 10th. I think you take second seat or third seat to Johnny Rabbit on the Voice time. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guest. Any introduction of our guest? Alderman from the 9th.
Jump right up. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today Ronnie Hour and Detective Michael Helsberg. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to have Rachel Smith from the Circuit Attorney's Office as my special guest this morning.
Alderman from the 26th.
Other than members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest today the former comptroller Vervis Jones and the lovely Stephanie Robinson from Erin Uwe. Thank you.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my esteemed guest Mr. Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T.
Alderman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guests Barbara Geismann, Thompson Coburn, and Steve Stogel.
Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest today David Holmes, plumbers and pipe fitters and Anthony Lancia with the AGC.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have Maureen from the, who's taken over for Celeste from the Realtors. I'd like Jeff, Keith, and Mark, also from the Carpenters Union.
Alderman from the 14th.
Yes, I would like to introduce Steve Spreck from the Communication Workers and Gary Otten from Painters District Council, number two. And Senator Harry Kennedy, Committee Men of the 14th Ward and also Representative from Sharon Carpenter's office. Thank you.
We also have with us Beverly Goldman from the Deltas. Beverly, could you please stand? Thank you for joining us today. Any further introductions? And Percy, Percy Green from Fire and Firefires. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, like wraps up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We gather here on March 14th on the eve of St. Patrick's Day weekend and also on the eve of the Ides of March where a governmental body got together and decided to assassinate their leader, which was very scary when I saw Mr. Vaccaro take the dais today twice. Thank you.
Alderman from the 17th, recognized on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes from the February 28th meeting.
Move by the Alderman from the 17th, seconded by the Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes. I have to honor the mayor, the following correspondent. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the St. Louis Developmental Disabilities Resource Commission. The reappointment of Mickey Hasner, who resides at 1507 Heritage Manor. The reappointment of Rosetta Jackson, who resides at 8 DeMora. The reappointment of Ms. Armitia Russell, who resides at 858 Pebblefield. The reappointment of Sue Bianchi, who resides at 548 Jackson Way. The appointment of Cecil Franklin, who resides at 1323 North Market. The appointment of Cheryl Davenport, who resides at 5930 DeGiverville. The appointment of Sherry Webber Meyer, who resides at 5248 Winona. The appointment of John McEnar, who resides at 3969 Connecticut. And all of these terms expire on October the 1st, 2015. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 20th, you recognize on the mayor's appointments to the St. Louis Developmental Disability Resource Commission.
It's a long one, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the mayor's recommendations.
Move by the Alderman from the 20th, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the St. Louis Public Library Board of Directors. The appointment of Vincent Volpe, who resides at 1521 Missouri and whose term expire, will expire on December the 31st, 2016. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Public Library Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of the mayor's appointment.
Move by the Alderman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Cronedelec Commons Community Improvement District. The appointment of Brian Pratt Pratt, who resides at 1507 Heritage Manor Court. The appointment of Philip Holsey, who resides at 8 DeMora. The appointment of Kevin Morrell, who resides at 858 Pebblefield Terrace. And the appointment of Tracy Coleman, who resides at 548 Jackson Way. And these appointments will expire on December the 31st, 2018.
Alderman from the 11th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Cronedelec Commons Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Mr. President, I move that we approve the mayor's appointments to the Cronedelec Commons Community Improvement District.
Move by the Alderman from the 11th, seconded by the Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Lambert-St. Louis International Airport Arts Committee. The reappointment of Frida Wheaton, who resides at 4932 Maffet. And the appointment of Tricia Paake, who resides at 40 North Kings Highway. And both of these terms expire on December the 31st, 2017. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 8th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Lambert-St. Louis Airport Arts Commission.
Members of the board, happy St. Patrick's Day. We do consider everybody Irish on March 17th. I would move to approve the appointments of the mayor to the St. Louis Airport Arts Commission.
Move by the Alderman from the 8th, seconded by the Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the 620 Market Transportation Development District. The reappointment of Timothy Van Maitre, who resides at 3807 Hartford. The reappointment of Paula Jensen, who resides at 6603 Crimson Lane. Reappointment of Gary Van Maitre, who resides at 2206 Lucas. The reappointment of Pat Shannon Van Maitre, who resides at 1222 Lucas. The reappointment of Matthew Krasinski, who resides at 5817 Nina. All of these terms expire on June the 30th, 2018. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the 620 Market Transportation Development District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for the adoption of the appointments to the 620 Market.
Thank you, Alderwoman from the 7th. It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 7th, seconded by Alderwoman from the 20th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Central West End South Special Business District. Reappointment of Pete Rothschild, who resides at 393 North Euclid. The reappointment of Nicholas Georges, who resides at 1328 Wild Horse. The reappointment of John McElwain, who resides at 4961 Le Cleve. The reappointment of Maggie Malcolm, who resides at 4570 Le Cleve. The appointment of Patrick Keely, who resides at 4554 Le Cleve. The appointment of Noel Lopez, who resides at 4947 Buckingham Courts. The appointment of Bruce Schultz, who resides at 22 North Euclid. All of these terms expire on December the 31st, 2018. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Central West End East End South Special Business District.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for the approval of the mayor's appointments.
Move by the Alderman from the 17th, seconded by the Alderman from the 12th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the 620 Market Community Improvement District. The reappointment of Timothy Van Maitre, who resides at 3807 Hartford Street. The reappointment of Paula Jensen, who resides at 6603 Crimson Lane. Both of these terms expire on December the 30th, on June the 30th, 2017. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
Alderwoman from the 7th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the 620 Market Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of the mayor's appointments to the 620 Market Community Improvement District.
Move by the Alderwoman from the 7th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 16th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
With dispensable line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our former counties? Alderwoman from the 28th, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would move for perfection of Board Bill 277.
Move by the Alderwoman from the 28th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 22nd. Alderwoman from the 28th, please proceed.
Yes, I would also propose to place a floor substitute before us this morning. It's on everyone's desk, both the final copy as well as the red line copy.
Okay, you want to make a motion to introduce the floor substitute?
Make a motion to introduce the floor substitute for Board Bill 277.
Move by the Alderwoman from the 28th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 20th. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohen. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Moore. Alderman Conway. Alderman Carter. Twenty-four, aye votes.
I vote your standing motion, Alderwoman from the 28th. Alderwoman from the 28th, you recognize on the floor substitute?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned previously, the marked up version of the floor substitute is As I mentioned previously, the marked up version of the floor substitute is on everyone's desk. This is approximately a sixty-five million dollar project to be built at the corner of Euclid and Lindell on the northeast corner there. It's a twelve-story building, two-hundred-and-seventeen apartments, ten thousand square feet of retail space. There have been many discussions with the neighborhood about this project. The developer has, and this is a major change in this bill, the developer has agreed to build one more level of parking below grade, which will mean three levels below grade, one level above grade, forty-four additional parking spaces, which will really help support the ten thousand square feet of retail that's going to be there and I think make it more successful with a less, less of an impact on the, on the residential folks who live right around there. This is a blighting study and sixteen years of tax abatement, ten years full abatement, six years of fifty percent abatement, and I would appreciate your support.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the twentieth?
Mr. President, members of the board, I just want to congratulate the Alderman from the twenty-eighth ward. I know that it was a Herculean effort to deal with the parking and I know very much that there were many around that area that were going to see how you could pull a rabbit out of your hat and I guess because Ron Els was here today, we were, you were able to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize.
Thank you. I would move that we perfect Board Bill two-seventy-seven floor substitute.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, second by Alderman from the twentieth, twenty-second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal counters? Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal counters? We will dispense with line items nine through twelve, second reading.
Following Board Bill was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee. Board Bill two-ninety-one, sponsored by Alderman Davis and the ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of sum of eleven thousand five hundred dollars a quick claim deed to remind release and forever quick claim to Lunar Tool Building, whose address is forty-three-oh-one McCree, certain city-owned property located in City Block forty-nine-seventy-four, which property is known by address fifteen-forty-one Tower Grove Place. Board Bill three-sixteen, committee substitute sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving the release termination of, and termination of a revisionary interest in certain property known as four-twelve South Sarah Street, authorizing the execution of a quick claim deed for said property and containing severability clause. The following Board Bill was reported out of the Convention and Tourism Committee. Board Bill three-twenty-eight, committee substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman, Alderman and Alderman, Alderman Young, President Reed, Alderman Davis, Alderman Krusen, and Alderman Ingracia, and ordinance authorizing and directing the execution of a festival reservation agreement between the city and Summer Rocks LLC, which agreement reserves during Memorial Day and Labor Day weekends a portion of Gateway Mall and certain street rights away adjacent to Gateway Mall to Summer Rocks for the conduct of music festivals for up to twenty years. The following Board Bill was reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill two-five-one, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and the ordinance directing the director of streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic at Whittier Street at the northeast corner of McPherson Avenue and Whittier Street to the southwest corner of McPherson Avenue and Whittier Street and containing an emergency clause. The following Board Bill was reported out of the Public Safety Committee. Board Bill three-thirty-one, sponsored by Alderman Behringer and Alderman Vaquaro and ordinance pertaining to public nuisances, repealing ordinance six-eight-five-three-five and enacting in lieu thereof a new, new ordinance establishing procedures for the abatement of public nuisances identifying, identified by the Public Safety Director and establishing an occupancy list requirement containing definitions, penalties, and an emergency clause. Board Bill three-thirty-two, sponsored by Alderman and Alderman, Alderman Schmidt, President Reed, Alderman Carter, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Vaquaro, Alderman Ogilvy, and Alderman Boyd, and ordinance relating to the identification of high merit historic properties in the city that are undergoing demolition by neglect, providing procedures for the designation of such properties and for the prosecution of owners and persons in control of such properties, promoting stabilization and restoration of such properties to the benefit of the city and its residents, containing definitions, penalties, and a severability clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I'd like to move to suspend the rules for the purpose of moving the following Board Bills to the perfection consent calendar. Board Bill two-ninety-one, three-sixteen committee substitute, three-twenty-eight committee substitute as amended, three-thirty-one and three-thirty-two.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, second by Alderman from the ninth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman, Alderman Tyus. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard.
I can't, I can't hear you.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Young.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz.
I can't hear you.
Alderman Howard. Alderman Florida.
Aye.
Alderman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy. I didn't hear you, Alderman Kennedy. Ald, Alderman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter. Alderman Krusen. Alderman Krusen. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Flowers. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Carter. Alderman Krusen. Twenty-two, aye votes, two no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion. Alderman from the twenty-second, Madam Clerk, please add the aforementioned bills to the perfection consent calendar. Alderman from the first, you recognize.
Do you want me to do it? He's doing it, okay.
Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize.
I move that we place Board Bills three-thirty-one, three-thirty-two, and three-twenty-eight, committee substitute as amended on the regular perfection calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Place the aforementioned bills on the regular perfection calendar.
So noted. So noted.
Could you read, could you read those Board Bill numbers back to us, Madam Clerk?
The Board Bill for, to go on the perfection calendar?
Yes.
Three-twenty-one, committee substitute? Three-thirty-one, three-thirty-two.
And.
And three-twenty-eight, committee substitute as amended.
Yes. That's it. Dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill three-twenty, committee substitute sponsored by Alderman Conway and the ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estiment and Apportionment authorizing a supplemental appropriation and set apart in a total amount of four million dollars from the airport revenue fund into the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July the first, two thousand and thirteen, and ending June the thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill three-twenty-one, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and the ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the two thousand and fourteen St. Louis Works and Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk Programs citywide appropriating five million, five hundred thousand dollars from the Street Improvement Fund and Public Work Emergency Clause. Board Bill three-thirty, three-twenty-two, sponsored by Alderman Davis and the ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate public surface rights for travel on the east-west alley in City Block nine-thirty-eight bounded by Delmar, Twenty-First Street, Lucas, and Twenty-Second Street in the city. Board Bill three-twenty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and the ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on the east-west alley in City Block forty-five-ninety-one west bounded by Oakland, Oakview Place, Berthole, Hampton, and Clayton in the city. Board Bill three-thirty, committee, Board Bill three-thirty, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard and the ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for travel in the southernmost fifteen-foot wide north-south alley in City Block five-seven-six bounded by Cass, Tenth Street, O'Fallon, Tucker, Thirteenth Street, and the excess portion of Thirteenth and Tucker, abutting City Block five-seven-six in the city. Board Bill two-nine-one. Sponsored by Alderman Davis and the ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of sum of eleven thousand five hundred dollars a quick claim deed to remind releasing forever quick claim to Lunar Tool Building, whose address is forty-three-oh-one McCree, certain city-owned property located in City Block forty-nine-seventy-four, which property is known by address of fifteen-forty-one Tower Grove Place. Board, three-sixteen. Board Bill three-sixteen, committee substitute sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and the ordinance approving the release termination of a revisionary interest in certain property known as four-twelve South Sarah Street, authorizing the execution of a quick claim deed for said property and containing a severability clause.
Yes, I did.
That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the seventeen, you recognize on the motion for perfection consent calendar.
Members of the board, I move that we perfect and consent.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, second by Alderman from the fifteenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill three-twenty-one, sponsored by Alderman Bosley.
Three, three-twenty, twenty-eight, committee substitute as amended.
Board Bill three-twenty-eight, committee substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman and Alderman, Alderman Young, President Reed, Alderman Davis, Krusen, and Ingracia, and the ordinance authorizing and directing the execution of a festival reservation agreement between the city and Summer Rocks LLC, which agreement reserves during Memorial Day and Labor Day weekends a portion of Gateway Mall and certain street rights away adjacent to Gateway Mall to Summer Rocks for the conduct of music festivals for up to twenty years.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number three-twenty-eight, committee substitute as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move for perfection of this Board Bill.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, second by Alderman from the twenty, twenty-fourth. Alderman from the seventh, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr.
Madam Clerk, could you ask the cameraman to move back? Yeah, just, yeah, so I can see him.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, first of all, I'd like to say thanks to all the members of the board that have participated in the discussion about this particular Board Bill. And I would like to say particularly thanks to Alderman Vollmer, because having taken the committee that rarely meets, he's met quite a bit on this bill recently. This is a bill that, as the clerk read, would allow a festival event to take place out here in front of City Hall on Memorial Day weekend and Labor Day weekend. It's a different event in terms of the people who are proposing to put this event on are proposing to pay the city. They are proposing to pay the city for the services used and also to allow the city to benefit from having that by giving us a stream of revenue from the ticket sales. That's an unusual thing. Usually, we're asked to provide all the services and clean up as well, so without any reimbursement. There's a lot of concern about this for a number of reasons. One is that there's a feeling that we're shutting out other musical events. And I think if you look at the bill, there is a non-compete clause in there, and it talks about and describes particularly what festivals would be prohibited. Those festivals would be festivals that are two or three days. They would have an average attendance of thirty thousand people each day who are paying members of the public. They're buying tickets. It would have at least three-point-three million dollars per day that they would be expending on producing and putting this performance on. They would have five or more musical events at each day. And I think that basically covers what would be, I'm sorry, it would have to be a for-profit organization also. So I think that describes events that could take place out here and that would be prohibited otherwise. We haven't had events like that in St. Louis. Lou Fest is a large, probably the largest event that we are known for around here, and it comes nowhere close to that kind of thing. The other thing that's been amended is we're looking for local vendors. Up to at least twenty percent of the vendors would be food trucks and local vendors from the community. They also have agreed that they will do the utmost to put local talent on the stages there as well. And I think basically that covers. There's been a lot of administrative things involved in here. One, talking about who the liaison would be between the city and the organization. To clarify that, that person would be a city employee representing our interest, so people would know who to talk to about the event, both on the producer's side as well as from the city's side. There have been many, many more amendments to the bill, but as I said, many of those are administrative clauses, and so with that, I would entertain comments from my colleagues.
All right. Alderman from the first, you were up first. Are you prepared?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, Board Bill three-twenty-eight greatly disturbs me. The first thing that disturbed me was the lateness of which we received this bill. I don't, as the recipient of a redistricting that was rammed down my throat, anything that I feel like has rammed down anybody else's throat, I always immediately have some problems with that. And especially when I think people are excluded. I sat through all the testimony that we had, and I felt for the musicians and the people that came. I think that the people who want to bring this festival probably have a good idea and a, you know, they want to make money and they want it to be in the best interest of the city, but I think they exactly did it wrong in not talking to the people. Even if you didn't have something that was permanent, I have always found it best in my community that you go out and speak to the people, especially the people who may be opposed to it, because sometimes they bring you very good ideas that you did not think about. So I don't like exclusion. I don't like it as a black female. I especially don't like exclusion. I don't like we've always done it this way, because that means you usually have left me out of it. So that was the first thing, just that the lateness of it. I know that at one point they were talking about doing the festival, trying to do something this summer, which I don't believe is going to happen, but to bring it so late, I think is a mistake. The other great problem I had, and that's something that we created when we changed our rules, was about all the amendments we had to have versus a clean committee substitute. That was a big mistake, and we got to see what happens when sometimes you don't know what you're changing, and then down the line, you see the impact of what you've changed. I want to say the Alderman from the eleventh got on my case when we left caucus early on about why I didn't object to changing those rules, and he was absolutely right. about why I didn't object to changing those rules, and he was absolutely right. And my defense to him was that I'd just gotten back, and so I didn't want to be opposed to everything that was coming down the line because I had opposed to other changes. But he was correct. I want to give him that because to have, I don't know how many amendments came before us the other day, that was just mind-boggling. And then to just really get a clean copy today, and I've been going through it and reading it, and I think I showed you, Mr. President, so I tagged my stuff. I like to know what I'm voting on. I like to know that I'm doing in the best interest of what I believe the city. And at this point, I can't do that. I just, I just feel like it's gone too fast, and I voted present before, and I'm not really opposed to it, I'm just opposed to the methodology. I think that's wrong, and I think it's wrong when, I got a chance to talk to the guy from Taste to St. Louis, which I had already wanted to do anyway, when I saw that he was leaving. I wanted to know, why are you leaving our city? I know that we're talking about regionalism and that county or the city doesn't make a difference, but when people say that, we don't really mean that because we still want to keep what's in the city because right now we have on our desk a resolution opposing the government jobs leaving our city. So we still want to be proud of the city of St. Louis, and we already have a problem with population continuing to decline. So everything about this makes me, I mean, not everything, but many things about it make it, make me uncomfortable. And I cannot vote for things when I think that I'm uncomfortable and I'm not sure about what I'm voting for. I want to thank the, not the sponsor of the bill, but the organization because they seem to be willing to change a lot of things, and that's good, and that's always a positive thing. I just think that they only did it at the tail end, and if they had done it at the beginning and sat down at the table with people, that there would have been a lot more comfortable people with this. Before I voted present, I'm inclined to vote no now, not because I don't think the festival is a good idea, but I do still just have a lot of questions, and I will have now a chance, I guess, before, I believe this is going to go to sign and die, or we're not going to, so that will give me a chance to really read it over and digest, and understand what it actually says so that I'm not having to face my community and tell them why I voted for something that I'm embarrassed about. Before I got on this Board of Aldermen, I watched, I'm not going to say on the news on me, and Alders said, I'm not going to say he or she said, oh, I have egg on my face, I didn't read that. I never want to be that person, so for those reasons, today I'm voting no, and I will read it and understand it, and hopefully that in the time period of 30 days before we come back here, they will take that opportunity to then sit down more with the people who have questions about it because there's probably maybe other things that don't need to be in this board bill that they may be able to work out that will then satisfy some of the people.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 24th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the Alderman from the 7th Ward pretty much covered the important changes. Maybe one more that we point out is we've really strengthened the clauses for the city to not extend the contract to 20 years. If ICM doesn't produce the festivals that they say they're going to produce, this has been reported over and over as a 20-year contract. It's not a 20-year contract, it's a 10-year contract with a 10-year, with a potential 10-year extension. And now with the amendments we did earlier this week, we've really made very clear the standards that ICM has to meet in order to extend it to the additional 10 years. I also just wanted to sort of comment, you know, this is one of those, maybe somewhat rare situations where you see yourself disagreeing with a lot of your friends. And there's maybe two things I can attribute that to. One is really sort of our issue, and I think one is an issue with how this was reported on. The part that's our issue is that we really didn't do a good enough job distributing up-to-date information on the bill. You know, I didn't realize until this Wednesday morning that the original bill, which had already been changed in committee, was still up on the city's website. So we had all these, we had all these people, you know, my friends, other people's friends in the room, who were reading this old document that honestly, a lot of us had the same issues with that they had, and they didn't have the opportunity to see the new document. So we're getting these emails, and there was this, it seemed like we were addressing things that, we were responding to comments on something that had already been sort of addressed. And so it really, really highlights, I think, a need for us to continue to push, to keep up-to-date information out there. You know, the hunger people have for information on what the city is doing is not going to decrease, it's going to increase, and the expectation that we are delivering that information is also going to increase. And we, we really have a long way to go, I think, and this highlights that. The other issue, though, was, I think, not so much our issue, and that was an issue with the way this was reported on. Yesterday, when I had a minute, I went back and I looked at the way that Chicago media had been reporting on Lollapalooza, when Lollapalooza decided to make their permanent home Chicago after they had been sort of producing a traveling festival. And I can tell you that it was a lot different than the way St. Louis media reported on this event, and, you know, I don't, I almost don't know what to say about that. I feel like there was just an enthusiasm in the Chicago media for being able to hang onto an event and highlight sort of the positive nature and the things people would appreciate about having that event in downtown Chicago that seemed completely absent from all the St. Louis coverage on this event. There wasn't, you know, I barely saw a single line written about how, hey, people in St. Louis will attend this thing and enjoy seeing these acts and the talent that right now they're generally traveling to other cities to see, and shouldn't we be appreciating the fact that now people won't have to travel and they'll be able to see this stuff in their own city? So, you know, it was, I guess, at the end of the day, it was a little disappointing, and I think it created more of a controversy and sort of was playing on people's fears of something that maybe they didn't need to be afraid of. And, you know, lastly, what didn't happen in the media is nobody highlighted all, you know, the opportunity this might provide for local talent. I mean, the idea that you'll have, you know, local bands probably included in the festival and that we'll be bringing thousands, probably tens of thousands of music fans into St. Louis to see the festival, there is huge upside if you're a local band and maybe you're playing a date, you know, near the festival, you're playing at a local venue after the festival ends one night. You'll have the chance to really increase your exposure to a whole new group of people potentially. And I wish we would have seen, I wish we would have seen that pointed out in the media about the opportunity rather than hammering away on, or, I don't know, stoking fears to a degree that I just think wasn't really accurate. And I'm, so I'm glad we made the changes. It's a much better bill than it was the day it was introduced, and I think at the end of the day, we're all much more supportive of it than we could have been had it not been changed. So, thank you.
Alderman, Alderman from the 14th?
I'm a somewhat older person, and I would like to say I have some responsibility to come. Well, to begin with, and I guess, you know, being from the age of blabber to the rabbit, things move a little bit slower in my mind, but I do understand that we as a city get, need to move forward and get into the 21st century and be able to grab opportunities when they come to us. Sometimes I think we lose opportunities because we tend to work on a 19th-century timeline. That said, I agree with Scott, we need to make sure that we update and give people the best and latest information. I think at this point, this is a great opportunity for the city. It's a great opportunity to bring youth and vitality into the city and to increase the money that comes into the city. We will have visitors, you know, coming in. These will be top talents, and most people will probably come for the weekend. However, if you want to come for one show, you can do that, as I understand. So I think it's a great opportunity. I, like I said, I'm kind of old and, you know, I deal with paper and a lot, and I'm trying to move myself forward, but I think as a city, we need to be ahead of the youth and the people we're serving. So that said, I'm for this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 10th?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank my vice chair for his eloquence today and during the meeting. Chair in this meeting was quite an educational experience, and it was also a very out-of-body experience. We have a city council promoting something to bring rock music to downtown St. Louis. When I was a child, this is Footloose in reverse. The city council wants dancing, they want music, they want fun and frivolity, they want money, and the citizenry says, no, we must not have this. So I urge you all to support this so we can move forward and maybe have some fun. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You did a phenomenal job handling the meeting, too, Alderman, by the way. Alderman from the 19th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It was an interesting process, I must admit. It surely could have been better, but it is what it is, and here we are. But I am excited about the opportunity for the city of St. Louis. I've been communicating with a lot of the artists in town, as you know, with the entertainment district. I get to meet a lot of them, and because I've been dealing with the arts, I raise artists. So I know a lot of people, and they're all excited about this. My job after this is to make sure that everybody is included, and so I've asked one of my groups that already operate and organizing to ask other people to come into the group, make sure every venue is booked with our local artists, because there's a lot of people going to be coming to our town that wouldn't normally be here. And so I can see where a lot of our artists will be able to make some additional money, be seen by some folks that would never have seen them originally, and so I'm very excited about it. But in politics, sometimes we get a little messy, and the hysteria that is created and the misinformation is not healthy. And I was just really bothered by all the misinformation that was given to the people who took time away from their jobs, their personal endeavors, to be here and then realized that there was, there was really nothing that was going to hurt them because the prospect for this initiative does not preclude anything that we do currently in the city of St. Louis. So it was really kind of sad to see that happen, but it also gave me opportunity to meet some additional people. So as we move forward, I pray that somehow this gives us a look from some other folks to bring new endeavors to the city of St. Louis, but I also pray that we handle it better and we're more coordinated and positive. At the end of the day, people don't want to work with you when all you can do is bring a lot of drama. So I'm looking forward to this exciting initiative. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the 11th? Are you up?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would like to request a roll call on the perfecting motion, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. President, I would also like to welcome the Alderman from the 24th to the real world. When you get your information off those machines that blink, oftentimes, it's not accurate. The, I can relate because a developer posted some pictures of houses that were not going to be built in my ward, and all of you know what a perfect gentleman and statesman I am, and I got 53, 53 ugly emails, five of which were kind of super ugly, and I had nothing to do with it other than that stupid machine that blinks, put up the wrong pictures on the website, whatever a website is. So, you know, and, and, and not that this bill moved any faster than things that allegedly have a sense of urgency, but the daily newspaper, it would have been impossible for them, I think, to keep up with the meanderings of this. Mr. President, may I inquire the Alderman from the 7th, please?
Alderman from the 7th, will you yield for questioning to the Alderman from the 11th?
Yes.
Alderman from the 11th, please proceed.
Alderman, let me preface my remarks by saying I have resented you ever since you put me out of work by reducing the size of the Board of Aldermen.
I'll see you at the gym.
I've got, I'm sorry?
I'll see you at the gym.
God, I hope not.
You said reducing the size.
The, I have a litany of questions here, and quite honestly, because out of, out of respect for you, and I don't think any of your answers are going to change my mind, so I'm just going to ask, just ask a couple of them. The definition, for instance, of admission revenue, does anybody understand that? I mean, that's like my statistics course. I didn't know correlation coefficient from a Pearson R, and I still don't. Alderman, don't worry, I'm just being, may I ask you seriously, though, K5PT is limited in LLC, is it fair of me to ask you to tell me who locally is in that LLC?
Okay, at the moment, that is made up of Steve and Melinda Stogel, and they are looking for other local investors.
Okay, thank you. K5PT.
I'm sorry?
K5PT. I thought, my next-door neighbor Representative Hummel uses that for hair gel, K5PT. It is, straighten this out for me. I think the general public feels that this is a 20-year bill, and after reading through the, I think, the proper committee substitute last night, that is not my understanding. There is an option to get to 20 years, but as we speak, what is before us is not necessarily a 20-year agreement. Is that your understanding?
That's correct. In fact, if they don't produce within, I think it's 350, no, 550 days, they, we can cancel that. So...
Yeah, I think that they get the opportunity to run it between the five and nine years, and if they're selling enough tickets, then they proceed, and, and there's an option that triggers the rest of the years?
Right. They have to meet certain standards. They have to sell 35,000 tickets for an event. They have to advertise or expend $250,000 to advertise the event each time, and they have to...
Similar to a Cardinal baseball game, only we draw more than 35,000.
Yeah. Then, you know, in the taxes and the fees they pay, it has to meet or exceed 600,000. So if those triggers aren't reached, they can be booted.
There's a provision, and I guess I'm in section, still in section three somewhere, an effective non-production notice. Is an effective non-production notice, is that notice that it's just not working? And if, in fact, they send us that in a timely fashion, can they punt?
If they give us notice before the 180 days that they're supposed to provide to us, that they're not going to produce an event, and they pay half, at least half the fee, then they, we can go and find somebody else to produce a similar event. But as I said before, we haven't had people who've done similar events in the past.
And that would be kind of unlikely because if I'm Paul McCartney, chances are I'm booked.
Right.
Thank, thank you. Is there any provision in here? Why would we not, on a major, major act like a Beyonce, for instance, why would we not
In 1992, Alderman McGuire passed an ordinance exempting musical events from paying an amusement tax.
The Alderman from the 28th did that?
He did. He did. The other alderman from the 28th, the prior.
No, I understand. I don't call him what you called him. I called him the alderman from the 28th. That's interesting. Thank you, lady. I appreciate the information. Mr. President, there are things that I read in here, you know, late last night. And again, to echo some of the sentiments of the alderman from the 1st, if, in fact, you did want to read this, it would have taken, and again, a long time, and if, in fact, you wanted to understand this, someone with my mental capabilities, it may take six or seven months. I mean, some of the verbiage in here is legalese extraordinaire, I think. And there's just a lot of work on the city. The mayor's going to name a person who's going to be the, I don't know what the word is, is he's the liaison, okay. I don't understand why we can review the records of summer rocks in a refrigerator on somebody's front porch, but we can't leave there with the records, and we can't carry the records away. I guess that, I hope for them, that applies to the IRS. I don't understand that section at all. It's a sealed room. You can't make copies. And I also, where do these guys come from? I guess I should ask the alderman from the 7th. Los Angeles?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. No, I knew the answer. The City's Public Facilities Protection Corporation? We deal with them all the time, don't we? Who is the City's Public Facilities Protection Corporation? They're going to choose our insurance consultant.
It's the self-insurance corporation that the city set up. It's made up of members of E&amp;A. So all those people would be involved in approving the selection of the person who's going to insure or the company that's going to insure the event.
Our Board of E&amp;A?
Your Board of E&amp;A.
That's a questionable group. Thank you again, lady. Mr. President, I just, on behalf of the people of the 11th ward, I think the fact that somewhere from the West Coast a group came and no one else came with them, no one else had the opportunity to say, "Hey, you know, I can get Bruce Springsteen. No, I can get Beyonce," coupled with the fact that the crowning blow for me was in Article 8, subsection small i, Mr. President, it allows for pat downs, and the people in the 11th ward just don't approve. So I will cast a no vote this morning, and I hope we know what we're doing here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 24th?
Well, the alderman from the 11th yielded questions.
Alderman from the 11th, will you yield for questioning to the alderman from the 24th?
Certainly.
Alderman from the 24th, please proceed.
So...
Where's that defense mechanism again, gentlemen? Your arms folded. Go ahead.
As you're well aware, Alderman, we play host to many events in St. Louis throughout the year, many of them which take place in public parks or on public streets, probably hundreds, I would guess, as you're aware, question mark.
Now your hands are on your hips. Of course I'm aware of that. Yes.
And what, how much do these other events typically compensate the city for using the space that we provide to them to host the event?
I have no idea. I try to keep it simple.
Right.
I'm not very good with numbers. I would assume that any festival that's held in the city, I would hope we have a whole lot of economic spinoff.
Well, the truth, it's an easy number. The truth is, we don't generally charge to allow these events to happen. Usually, we let these organizations, many of them are nonprofits, so this is probably reasonable, but we let them use the space for free. We give them the space. They don't pay rent, essentially. So what is so sort of, it's a little hard for me to understand, is all the scrutiny we place on somebody who wants to pay us rent, right, who's providing a direct revenue stream to the city versus the complete lack of scrutiny we demand of all the other events who we provide space to for free. Does that confusion make sense to you?
No.
No, okay.
I will tell you this. I am uncomfortable passing judgment on something like this, quite honestly, because I don't have the staff to help me to review it. I, as an alderman, and you're, now your hands are back on your hips and you're laughing again, but I'm not sure, and I mean this sincerely, that I have the moxie, the know-how, to interpret that legalese, and quite frankly, gentlemen, I don't. And I've been doing it probably longer than you. I think this is an uneducated vote, and I would contend, and that's why, that's what's great about this country. The alderman from the 24th can vote yes, and I can vote no.
And I, you know, I encourage us all to vote no more often, I think. But we have all these events. We don't vote on them at all, right? We just, like, all this, all this sort of hand-wringing over the details of this contract, most of the events that happen don't pay us, and we don't vote on them. And now we've got one that does want to pay us, and some folks are, think there's something wrong with that. And that's what I don't, that's what I'm having a hard time comprehending.
Well, you're not doing a very good job of reading my mind. I mean, that's not where the opposition, my opposition to this emanates. My opposition to this emanates, gentlemen, I'm one at 28 here. No one has talked to me about suspending the rules, and no one's talked to me about the legislation. So left alone to my own iPad, which I don't know how to operate, I'm dangerous. But just in my own little world.
Right. Now, you know, I agree with you that you can't believe everything you read on the internet, of course. However, you should be able to believe what you read on the city's website or on, you know, when we're providing public information, we should hope that information is accurate, right?
Yeah. Gentlemen, the only, the only things that I pop up on my little green machine, which my nephew gave me, and I wish he hadn't, I'm usually looking for a good used car. I don't, I don't read the websites. I read the hard copies of the, you know, inflammatory papers like The Wall Street Journal, The Post-Dispatch, USA Today, The Evening World, seems to be picking on my neighborhood and ward rather heavily the last couple of weeks. I sent them a letter, which they didn't respond to, by the way, but I don't want to say that because this might be televised.
I'm out of questions.
Alderman from the 1st?
Mr. President, members of the board, if the alderwoman from the 7th would yield, please?
Alderman from the 7th will yield for questioning to the alderwoman from the 1st.
Yes.
Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
Thank you. Alderwoman, one of the things that I, and that's why I'm voting no today is because I'm trying to get through stuff, but I had heard before about the amusement tax that the alderman, from the former alderman from the 28th, so as to be correct, had allegedly passed. Do you have an ordinance number? Because I kind of scrolled through looking for that, and I didn't find it under him.
Another person came up to me and said, "That was Alderman Beckerly, so maybe you look under Beckerly, you may find it."
Okay, because I didn't find it under Alderman McGuire. And do you have an ordinance number? Okay, thank you very much. That was the question, because I couldn't find it. And that's what I'm saying about when you do things in a hurry, things get misquoted, misspoke. And those are the kind of things that if we're saying that an ordinance was passed, to me, we should have had a copy of that to show us that that was in fact. So I kind of feel like I'm in the middle of the alderman from the 24th and the 11th in a time warp here, okay? Because at one point, I was the alderman from the 24th, I guess, in that I was very new, and Alderman from the 11th was the president of the Board of Aldermen. So, and I remember us not wanting to even have computers at the Board of Aldermen, okay? Not us, because I wanted one, okay? But we didn't get them until 2003. So I don't think computers are bad, but I do think that rushing anything to the point where people don't understand is bad. The alderman from the 24th spoke too, that he thought that the press had only reported the bad things that happened. I think the press didn't report some of the things that they should have. I think like, they never, I didn't find that they reported that the event people had never, ever produced an event such as this. I found that out the other day when I asked the question, not from reading the press. He also talked about why was there such a scrutiny about someone that was going to pay us versus the people who we usually just let do it because they're not-for-profit and we don't get paid. Whenever we get paid, that's why we need scrutiny, okay? I mean, when we're getting paid, that's when people expect scrutiny. When you're just doing a not-for-profit or you're not getting money, then you don't have to stand over it and count what's coming in. But once it, funds come into the city, then the E&amp;A kicks in, especially the comptroller kicks in. And I want to say that I don't, even if it was a not-for-profit, I wouldn't have a problem with that kind of scrutiny being all over. Scrutiny is good for the citizens of the city of St. Louis, so that we can go back and say that we've done our job. There's nothing wrong with that. He talked about that he thought the press was playing on the fears. I think we've always had people who felt that. Whenever it's something we don't like, we feel like the press is not reporting fairly. I've had that many, many times, okay? So that's part of what happens down here. Other people think that that's a good thing. I thought it was good to get the people out and for them to come downtown and ask questions. There was some statement about that, well, they inflamed people, and then people came down and found out we had changed those things. We may not have changed those things had the people not been down there. The people need to keep our feet to the fire. You need to stay on your elected officials about what you think. We cannot read your minds. Although we're representative government, it is always better to hear from the citizens. And the things were changing so fast, different people came down with different concerns, things that still got changed, okay? So I don't think that they wasted their time or anything like that. I think that I got to talk to people. I got to hear what they thought. I got plenty of emails, boy. The alderman from the 11th speaks to that machine that blinks. I think that's good, and I kind of almost sleep with my machine that blinks. So, but I like hearing from the residents and what they think and what their concerns are, and even just bringing up concerns that I never thought of. So I don't think it's any problem with the press covering this as hard as possible. And I'm going to look at this amusement tax. I'm glad to know that it was Beckerly, not McGuire, because I was surprised that the former alderman from the 28th would have sponsored it. I beg your pardon? It is McGuire?
Mr. President, it was Alderman McGuire, and it was passed in February of 1992.
Okay, all right. So that's interesting. So it's still ordinance 62515, though. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. That's interesting. I will be talking to the former alderperson, ask him what his thoughts were with that. But thank you for giving me that ordinance, because when I looked through it, I didn't find it listed under there, and maybe I just missed it. But again, I think that should have been, if we're saying that this is pursuant to an ordinance that we passed, that's the kind of thing that should be before us. I think that we don't take enough time to read and know what we're doing. We push the things out. We repeal ordinances. Since I've been down here, we don't put the old ordinance even on the table. So we're repealing the ordinance that people don't even know. I think that we rush things too much, and I think this isn't a prime example. And as I said before, the other problem is that that whole thing of not being able to have a committee substitute and not having it available for you to read as a committee member, and when I say you, I mean me, as a committee member, is a giant mistake if you want people to understand and vote in a manner in which you can. And I believe I can read it and understand most of the things in there if given, I'm not talking about undue time, but just given ample time and getting a clean floor substitute. And I don't know who, why that happened. Just yesterday was not enough time to understand it. Well, I'm sorry. I do know why it happened, because we passed a rule change that said we can't bring a committee substitute into the committee unless it's over 24 hours, and also because we were pushing this through so fast. So whenever we're pushing something this fast, I hope the press has all the scrutiny that they want to have on it, and I hope we also have the scrutiny, just because we may not be reading accurately, and we may not know what's in there. And I don't like other people telling me what's in a bill. I like to read it for myself and then be able to ask questions once I've had time to comprehend it. And for that reason, as I said before, I will be voting no. And I hope that in the 30 days that we have before we do sign and die, that the event planners reach out and that they come with someone more than just the Stogels as partners. I hope there's something in writing about the partnership, and also think, hope that they can come back and say, "These 30 days, we've used this time to reach out to people so they're more comfortable with this bill."
All right, thank you, Alderman. We also have with us today Mary One Johnson. Everybody remember Mary One Johnson, Mary One Home Team. Thank you for joining us today. You guys probably didn't recognize Mary at first. She's not in her trademark red. Normally, she's in that trademark red, Mary One. But thank you, Mary. You're looking wonderful. Appreciate having you today. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 21st?
Mr. President, with my friend, the alderman from the 24th, yield to a question?
Alderman from the 24th, will you yield for questioning to the alderman from the 21st?
Only if I have the right answer.
Okay. I'll take that as a yes. Alderman from the 21st, please proceed.
Yeah. So Alderman, you mentioned that you were kind of taken aback by some of the criticism or concern, especially the media coverage of this bill. I mean, would you agree, though, that the version we now have is better than the version that was originally submitted?
Oh, absolutely. I had, I had a lot of issues with the first bill as well. And in fact, I told people I wouldn't vote for the first bill unless some things were changed. And so I'm glad they did change. But, you know, I think, you know, maybe where this question is going, your next question is going to be, "So don't you think all that input from citizens was good?" Yes, you know, obviously, I welcome the input. You know, it's great to see people in the room. I'm not, I don't think I had any criticism for those people. I had some criticism for the way we share information, and I think for what the media chose to scrutinize with this without looking at any of, I think, the, you know, obvious benefits.
Sure. And I agree. I think that, I think that sometimes we can, we can always do a better job of sharing information down here at the Board. It's my small pitch for Board Bill 204. I think it will help for all of us to be better informed about what happens in these committees. But I think, I think some of the reports we saw in the media and some of the reaction from the public was justified, especially considering the first draft of this bill. That non-compete clause was pretty broad. And for a lot of folks who, as their business conducts events in the city of St. Louis, or for nonprofits who conduct events as their largest fundraiser of the year, for us to make into law a contract that clearly states that the city shall not issue a permit for any competing event between late March and early September was frightening to a lot of people, and rightfully so. Would you agree?
I think I was in the paper the day after calling that part of the contract into question. And Alderman from the 6th will tell you what I had to say about it as soon as I saw it over the weekend. So, I mean, yeah, we, I mean, we agree, we agree on that point, absolutely. I just, it, I just sensed this, and I think you have, I think you have sort of made many of the same points I'm kind of obliquely making here, is this sort of self-hatred we sometimes experience in the St. Louis media, that they're ready to, you know, assign the worst possible intentions as well as continually highlight the negative while completely turning a blind eye to the positive. And that's just, that's just something I noticed again in this case, and I think you've oftentimes noticed the same thing.
Yeah. I think, though, that that's a predictable response if we conduct business in the way in which a lot of these bills are produced. They come very quickly in the last week's session. They come very quickly in the last week's session. There's this false timetable, that it has to be passed immediately or we're going to miss our opportunity. And the first stab is always very far-reaching and almost bullying. And it scares a lot of people. And anytime you're talking about an event that is gonna, I mean, you're talking about a 20-year commitment here. I think everybody would probably want a little bit more time to digest this contract and to kind of examine what could be the unintended consequences. I think if we, you know, we look back now, we kind of hope the folks who voted on the Rams deal 20 or so years ago had spent a little bit more time looking at some of the details of that deal. So, you voting no? All right. Well, thank you, Alderman.
You bet.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion on Board Bill Number 328, Committee Substitute As Amended? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 7th, you recognize the close?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. As you can tell from the discussion today, there has been a lot of discussion about this bill. There have been two committee hearings. I think each of them were three hours plus long, and we've had this discussion today. Basically, what we're talking about is allowing someone, a for-profit organization, to come in and produce a major event that will put us on the map as a city that really appreciates music. They are willing to pay us for the city services they use. They're willing to share the revenue that comes from that event. And they are looking to help us in promoting our local talent, our local vendors. And I just see it as a win-win. We can have additional events. They won't be as large, but last night I heard that somebody was saying that we have four local people who can do an event like this. Well, you know, the four local people have been here all the 30 years I've been on this board, and I've never seen them come forth and say, this is what we want to do, and we want to share our revenue with you, and we want to pay you for the services, and we can make St. Louis a map. Well, let's do it. We're going to do it with this organization, and if other people come forth and say they can do a quality event, all the better. But they have to hit the parameters if, in order to be exempt, or, you know, precluded from doing so. And as I said, we have never had an event this large. We have never had anybody propose to do something like this. So yes, we're taking a risk, and I'd gladly take that risk to fill the hotel rooms, to make all our musicians working at the bars and the restaurants, to put them out there and let people know the talent that we have in St. Louis. Let's make St. Louis swing and sing. And I would renew my motion that we perfect this bill today.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 7th, seconded by Alderman from the 24th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 328, Committee Substitute As Amended. It's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Crewson, President Reed, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Carter. 19, I-votes, 5, no-votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion that Alderman from the 7th and perfected Board Bill Number 328, Committee Substitute As Amended.
I'm sorry.
We also have our license collector who's joined us. Thank you for joining us today.
Board Bill 331, sponsored by Alderwoman Behringer and Alderman Vaccaro, and artists pertaining to public nuisances, repealing ordinance 68535 and enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance establishing procedures for the abatement of public nuisances identified by the Public Safety Director and establishing an occupancy list requirement containing definitions, penalties, and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 16th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 331.
I move to perfect Board Bill 331.
Moved by Alderman from the 16th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. Board Bill 331 is an occupants requirement list. And what that is for is that when the city of St. Louis has rental property, and we have had more than two calls of service by the police to that residence, it becomes a nuisance. Then we have what's called a crackdown meeting. And in the crackdown meeting, which is informal, we sit down and we figure out what we can do to work with this property owner to fix this nuisance that we're having. At that point that we've met with them, we go ahead and either it's abated and everyone moves on, or we go to the next formal part of the process, which is called a crackdown. At the crackdown meeting, we need to know who's in the property. Some people are fortunate enough that the landlords or the property owners will produce what's called a rent roll. Unfortunately, we have not had that happen in the 16th ward. And so when I meet with my problem properties officer and my neighborhood improvement specialist and the police, I said to them, what can we do? What can I do to make your job easier? What tool can I put in that toolbox? And they said that when we get to this part of the process, which is cease and desist, which is a closed, formal process, we would like a rent roll. And that's the occupants requirement list. And so what this bill does is it requires, once we've gotten that far into the process that we're having that many problems with that property, it says we would like to know who resides in your property. And so that is what Board Bill 331 does. Instead of making it optional, it actually makes it required.
Excellent. Any further, Alderman from the 1st, you recognize?
Mr. President, members of the Board, in full disclosure, I am a landlord. I don't do month-to-month leases at all. I actually probably have one of the strictest leases in the city of St. Louis. But I had, I wasn't actually on, I'm not on the legislative committee, but I was in there. And so I was meant to be in there because I had a lot of questions about the occupancy list requirement or rent rolls. And so one of the things I spoke to was that I think that we are doing piecemeal legislation, that you're doing this at the end, but you didn't require them to have a list of the occupants in the first place. And I don't know if I would even agree to that, but I'm saying you're coming behind the landlord. And what this does is says, once they're in a procedure, that they have to then give a list of the current occupants of the property. Now, the landlord may or may not know, because you're, depending on your lease, your lease can require that they list, my lease makes you say who is occupied, who's going to occupy that property, and if you put anybody else in there over 30 days, then that's a means for me to evict you. But a lot of landlords don't have that kind of lease. So you obviously may not know who is in your building. You will know the person who you have a lease with, you will know the person who you have a month-to-month lease with if you don't have a year-long lease. But you don't necessarily have the opportunity to know every occupant that's in the property as long as they are lawfully within the conservation district. So if it says that there can be four people in a property, the leasing may be the person that's in there who's on the lease or who has a month-to-month with you. So you know that person, but you don't necessarily know who the other people are. Now, so we are now saying that the landlord has to go find out who's in this property. I don't really have a problem with the landlord finding out who's in their property. I have a problem with government saying that you have to, I guess. Whenever I start to feel, this always, when I read this thing, it gave me kind of the chills. I'm a civil rights person, and I'm a civil rights person even when it doesn't satisfy me. So therefore, when the KKK wanted to march in our city many years ago, I supported that, even though I don't support the KKK. Because once you chip away at the KKK's rights, you chip away at the NAAC's rights and my rights. So this I looked at as, so we're going to tell the landlord that they now have to go find who the occupants are and report them. And it's a list of current occupants, not a list of the people who rent from them. I could understand if we said the list. But here's the thing, the list that they turn in, and this is why I say the piecemeal legislation doesn't really work. If I turn in this list tomorrow, if the people want to, as long as they are legal, they can put another group of people in there, and it could be somebody else living in there with them in the next week or the next month down. This does not solve what the police wants, okay? Or what they say they're getting at. So I went and tried to read the previous nuisance ordinance, which we are repealing, 68535, but that part wasn't in here. But I don't understand where they're getting, what they're getting at, why they're writing it like this, because they're not going to get to it. They will only get that list that is to the landlord's best knowledge. Now, how will the landlord find out who the current occupants are? He will have to go to the current leasing or the current occupants, if he can find all of them and ask them. But that may or may not be the best list. Because if you come to a place where there are problems, and you come and I'm looking for someone to find out who rents that apartment, if I go there, they may or may not, they can give me a list, and that may be to their best knowledge, but it may not be a complete list. So then, there's nothing in here that says, what happens if they make a mistake? It doesn't have to be they purposefully did not give us a current list. It could be a mistake. The other thing is, what happens if you go to the person who's leasing your apartment and you say, well, I want to know everybody who's in here? And they say, I don't have to tell you that. I refuse to tell you that. If you don't have a lease saying they have to tell you that, you cannot make them tell you that. As long as they have a lawful amount of people in there, we cannot make the leasing tell us who is in that apartment. I think that we're not doing this right. I think that we need to do this holistically. And again, I think that the police always want more police power. And I hear citizens, whenever they're scared, they want to give the police more police power. Citizens will tell me, why do we have to have a subpoena? Or why do we have to have, the police have to have, go to the judge and ask to go into a place, okay? Why can't they just go in? They know that's going on. Well, no, they don't. They don't. They often suspect something is going on, but they don't know. So I am opposed to this, not because I don't think we should have good landlords who are responsible and who manage their apartments well, but because I don't think this gets to it at all, and I think that it's going to be a mess, and when they try to enforce it, it's, it leaves something to be desired. I actually told them, and I am going to do this, I interned at legal services when I was in law school, and even though I was a landlord, I was also arguing to keep people in their property. So I got to argue both sides of the coin. And so I am going to, during these days when we are out, I'm going to take this to legal services, because I just want to talk to them about how would they attack this? This is what I'm talking about, knowing how the other side, what would they, how would they defend this against us? Do we have something that's not defensible? I like for us to write good legislation, and I don't think this is, and I will be voting no. And I do want a roll call, please.
All right, thank you. We also have with us Coach Andre from, the committee man from the 22nd ward. Thanks for joining us today. And State Representative Carla Mayback, so thank you for joining us today. Alderman from the 10th?
Hello, hello. Thank you, Mr. President. I have never figured out I have either the advantage or disadvantage of never going to law school or being a lawyer, but I am a landlord, and of the five properties I have, I always want to know who is living in all five of them, so I deal on a different level. I don't think legally, I think commonsensically. If you own a property, you should know who the hell is living in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 19th?
I just want to ask a question. I chose not to get involved with this because I didn't think it was legal, but who am I to say it? But if we're going to do this, we have to, I think it would be better if we did it up front and created an occupancy law for the city of St. Louis. When you go behind and after the fact of legal documents that have been signed and agreements that have been processed, it's hard for us to step in, except that nuisance process is only going to limit us, and it's going to create unnecessary duress on both sides, actually, as we do every day. And we just haven't been challenged yet in court on it, on the nuisance law. But what I want to do is, I thought it would be extremely beneficial if the city had an occupancy law like most other municipalities have. So it's just something to think about.
Alderman from the 1st?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I want to take exception to the Alderman 10th statement that if you have legal, that you don't have common sense, okay? That they, in fact, they can be, I think the Alderman from the 10th and the 8th will attest that you can have both, okay? Along with our city council, I'm sorry, our attorney for the Board of Ald.
Thank you, Alderwoman. And thanks to that statement, I'll be able to go home tonight, because my wife would... Alderman from the 10th, you're getting us all in trouble.
I was not speaking of all ours, but I will disagree with the Alderman from the 8th having common sense.
All right, all right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 16th, you recognize the close on Board Bill Number 331.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. I do want to speak to the fact that, yes, this is on the end, because it addresses when we have the worst of our worst property owners who are clearly not taking care of their properties, and we are, in effect, basically, if we cannot take care of the properties, it's impacting the other properties around it. I believe that if you want to take this, care of this up front and introduce that legislation, I think that's a great idea. But for right now, when the citizens of the city of St. Louis look at me and say, why aren't you doing something? Then, and I come up with a solution, and we pass that down here, we can say, we have, here's what we have for now, and here's what we're looking at for the future. So my goal was to try and do something now, and then if we can get this, as Frank Oswald, who was at the hearing testified, it's been tried, and we can try it again. And Rich Sikora, who's with the city council's office, who spoke at the meeting, explained that this was legal. I would not be moving forward if it was not legal. So with that, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 16th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 331. It's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Crewson, President Reed, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman French, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter. 17, I-votes, 1 no-vote, 1 present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion that Alderman from the 16th and perfected Board Bill Number 331.
Board Bill 332, sponsored by Alderman Schmid, President Reed, Alderman
Board Bill 332, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, President Reed, Alderman Carter, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Vaquaro, Ogilvy, and Boyd, in ordinance relating to the identification of high merit historic properties in the city that are undergoing demolition by neglect, providing procedures for the designation of such properties, and for the prosecution of owners and persons in control of such properties, promoting stabilization and restoration of such properties to the benefit of the city and its residents, containing definitions, penalties, and a severability clause.
Alderman from the 20th, you recognize on perfection of Board Bill Number 332.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for perfection of Board Bill 332.
Move by Alderman from the 20th, seconded by Alderman from the first. Alderman, please proceed.
Mr. President, members of the board, as we all know, there are a number of things that make St. Louis great. First, its people, its amenities, infrastructure. Part of that are the great buildings that we have, and you can go in certain parts of town and recognize where you are, as opposed to being in some of the vanilla sorts of areas that are not, not part of a great city like the City of St. Louis is. However, with time, there are issues with regard to some of these buildings, and we also have situations where people are not taking care of those. What seems to happen is, we have some of the high merit historical buildings, which the Cultural Resource Office can designate and recognize, and in those cases, they're basically being demolished by neglect. This is something that not only happens within the City of St. Louis, it is something that is going on nationwide. Other areas have tried to put some of these in place. The only way we intervene tends to be, you know, 10 or 20 years down the road, when somebody comes in for a demolition permit, and Cultural Resources reviews that and says, "No, you can't demolish this building." We had that kind of situation with one of the couple's warehouses, and the issue that comes up is that there's a suggestion that somehow the City of St. Louis is not allowing this person to utilize their property appropriately, when in fact, they have not been taking care of the property to sustain it in a way that recognizes the historic aspect of that, of that building. So what this does is, it's not a panacea for everything, it doesn't correct all of our problems, but it puts a special focus on these high merit historic buildings and provides us with more tools. And so we're not just addressing these as public safety hazards where we're going to demolish them, we recognize early on that we're going to put additional focus on this building and try to work with the owner to make sure that not only is it in the interest of public health and safety, but we're going to preserve it as a high merit historic building. So the process for this is pretty clear. There's a petition that the Director of Cultural Resources gives to the Preservation Board of the City of St. Louis, which says that this is a high merit historic building, and these are the particular problems that are going to cause this building to be demolished if we're not really working on taking care of it. Then deemed, if it's deemed appropriate through a public hearing, well, the, yes, there'll be a public hearing with the Preservation Board. The Preservation Board then refers it to the Building Commissioner, who really is the only, the only office that can look at these buildings and determine that there are building code violations. There are notices that are provided to the owner if the conditions are not corrected. There's three different processes that can take place. This does not avoid any of the current processes that are in place. It can go to municipal court, it can go to administrative hearing, or it can go over to the state court. If, for instance, it goes to an administrative hearing, and the individual does not take care of the property, there can be a, they can go to the state court for a contempt citation, and in the state court, they can seek specific performance, there's a specific cause of action that is listed here, and there are progressive penalties of $300 to $500, which can be given per day. It's not likely that jail time would occur, but that is also here as in other things. And then we can put the costs of, if we have to go in there and repair it, we can put the cost of that repair on the real estate tax bill and put a lien on the property. I appreciate everyone who has participated in this effort, certainly the City Council's office and Barb Burkett, Ms. Bradley from Cultural Resources' office, Don Row, who was pinch hitting yesterday, and Frank Oswald from the Building Commissioner's office, and the great questions that we had from all the people at the committee level, and others throughout the community landmarks, and others who have been very concerned about how we proceed with this. Again, this is not a panacea, it doesn't take, it's not going to take care of finding funds to stabilize all of our buildings, but we're working on other processes to deal with that. It's not going to take care of all of our LRA property, it's only going to work on these high merit buildings and try to make sure that we intervene as quickly as possible to send a message that we have a policy in the City of St. Louis of preserving and protecting these buildings rather than tearing them down for public safety. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 20th, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion, ask for roll call.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 20th, seconded by Alderman from the first, that we perfect Board Bill Number 332. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaquaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Krusen, President Reed, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Carter. Twenty-two, I-votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 20th, perfected Board Bill Number 332.
That's the extent of Board Bills for our perfection.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize.
I'd like to move to suspend the rules for the purpose of moving the following Board Bills to the third reading consent calendar, Board Bill 321, 322, 329, and 330.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, and seconded by Alderman from the 12th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaquaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Krusen, President Reed, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Howard, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Carter.
Alderman Tyus.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to change my vote, aye, please.
Please make note of that change, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-two, I-votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 22nd. Madam Clerk, please place the aforementioned bills on the third reading consent calendar. At the request of Alderman from the first, please move Board Bills Number 317, 318, and 319 to the third, regular third reading calendar from the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Third reading consent.
Board Bills, 276, 315, 294, 288, 308, 313, 312, 311, 293, 301, 302, 303, 304, 305, 306, 307, 309, 321, 322, 329, and 330.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent.
I move for third reading consent.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 26th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. There's been a request for previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. Third reading, report of engravements.
Board Bill 292, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Etzel Place 5 redevelopment area and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the, on the third reading, final passage of Board Bill Number 292.
Mr. President, please place that Board Bill on the formal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change, place Board Bill Number 292 on the third reading and formal calendar.
So noted. Board Bill 204, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman French, President Reed, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Ingracia, and Alderman Vaquaro, and ordinance requiring the recording of all public meetings of the St. Louis Board of Aldermen, including committee meetings, the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, the Board of Public Service, and the Preservation Board, making such recordings publicly available, containing definitions, distribution of recordings, the creation of a YouTube channel, exceptions, and an effective date.
Alderman from the 21st, you recognize on the third reading, final passage of Board Bill Number 204, committee substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 204, committee substitute.
Moved by Alderman from the 21st, seconded by Alderman from the 24th. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've talked about this bill last week, and we've debated it, I think, three hearings in, in committee. I think what this bill will do is create a new level of transparency in St. Louis city government. It will allow both the public, as well as other lawmakers and members of this body, to be able to go back and review what has occurred in our committee hearings and in other meetings of other public bodies. I think even in the debate we've had today, we've seen a few instances on bills where it would have been good if other Aldermen would have been able to go back and review what occurred in committee hearings that we were not able to attend or were not on those committees. So with that, I renew my motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion on Board Bill Number 2? Alderman from the 18th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I do rise in support of the bill. I just wanted to point out that, as you know, this year Ways and Means did record the whole budget process when the bills came through committee, and the recording of it gave us the opportunity to review some of the testimony that was necessary when we had questions about some other issues that did arise, even after the budget process. So it is of great both significance and importance and assistance, and so then I do urge our, our support for it.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 21st, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 21st, seconded by Alderman from the 24th, that we third read and final pass, Board Bill Number 204, committee substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. There's been a request for previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries.
Board Bill 317, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance adopting and approving a redevelopment project for the redevelopment project area number five and redevelopment project area seven, as prescribed, described in the St. Louis Innovation District Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the third reading, final passage of Board Bill Number 317.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for third reading, final passage.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the ninth, Alderman from the 17th, please proceed.
I move for third reading, final passage.
No, already had the motion in the sec, already have the motion in the.
I'll just renew my.
Oh, you renew, renew your motion. Any further discussion? There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaquaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Krusen, President Reed, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Carter. Twenty-one, I-votes, one present.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 17th, third read and finally pass, Board Bill Number 317.
Board Bill 318, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a second amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the City of St. Louis and St. Louis Innovation District, prescribing the form and details of said amendment, authorizing certain actions by city officials, and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the third read and final passage of Board Bill Number 318.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for your third reading, final passage of Board Bill 318.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 28th. There's been a request for previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries.
Board Bill 319, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of one or more series tax increment revenue notes for St. Louis Innovation District, RPA seven project series A and series B, collectively the RPA seven notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $37,100,000 plus issuance costs for certain reimbursable redevelopment project costs associated with the redevelopment district, with the redevelopment project area seven, and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill Number 319.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for third reading, final passage of Board Bill 318.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the ninth. Any discussion? There's been a request for previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries.
That's the extent of Board Bills for third reading.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills, 276, 315, 294, 288, 308, 317, 318, 319, 313, 312, 311, 293, 301, 303, 304, 305, 306, 307, 309. three oh six, three oh seven, three oh nine, two oh four, committee substitute, three twenty-one, three twenty-two, three twenty-nine, three thirty, three seventeen, three eighteen, and three nineteen. I read it twice, okay.
All other business, all other business being suspended, the President shall an open session fix his signature here till to the end that these may become law. Yes, ma'am. It's this one. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 246 Sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, President Reed, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracchia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Ortmann, Valmer, Villa, Honowitz, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman French, Boyd, Vacaro, Cohn, Williamson, Carter, and Alderwoman Kusson. The Board of Aldermen supports the Medicaid expansion in Missouri up to 138% of the federal poverty level in order to provide cost-effective healthcare services for low-income uninsured Missourians.
Alderman from the 20th, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number 246.
I move for unanimous consent.
Hear no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I believe that I have this merely because of the fact that I'm Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee. I want to thank Alderwoman Florida for this resolution, which she is going to take particularly to a constituent who has brought this to our attention. And so I would ask that she might be second named on this resolution if possible. We have not had hearings on this matter, even though it is a critical matter to all of our constituents. You might notice that most, if not all, of our Aldermen are on this resolution. Mostly, we have not had hearings because all of our delegation in Jefferson City are already supporting this very needed, critical expansion of Medicaid. Healthcare is a basic human right. The issue is that we are not covering folks who do not have children and who cannot otherwise get insurance coverage. So we cannot do very much with regard to anything, anywhere within the state of Missouri unless people have healthcare and they have that appropriate coverage. This is something where lots of jobs, and I'm not going to go into the particulars because this is not the hearing and it's not the right place to do that, but a lot of jobs can be created if we have this Medicaid expansion. Hospitals can be saved. We are not only losing patients, we are going to lose hospitals and other healthcare facilities in the state of Missouri without this expansion. The disproportionate share payments that a lot of hospitals were getting are being phased out. And as a result, some of us in this room, including myself, have hospitals who must cut their budgets, and they already have very tight budgets to start with. And there are a lot of out-of-state hospitals that are on the brink of closure if we don't have this expansion of Medicaid. I think that there are some in the state legislature who believe that somehow they're thumbing their nose at the Affordable Care Act, or at the President, or whatever. But while they're doing that, I realize that we need to be concerned about fiscal prudence, but this is not fiscally prudent. And so we are urging that the Missouri General Assembly expand Medicaid.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 20th, you recognize on the motion for Resolution 246.
I move that we adopt the resolution.
Moved by Alderman from the 20th, seconded by Alderman from the 9th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 251 Sponsored by President Reed. The Board of Aldermen stand in opposition to the proposed relocation of VA jobs from the city to Overland, Missouri.
Alderwoman from the 7th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 251.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I move for unanimous consent for Resolution 251.
Hear no objection. Alderwoman, please proceed.
Thank you. Recently, there was an announcement by the General Services Administration that they were going to move, I believe it was 800 people from this downtown area, and consolidate them in Overland. That would have a significant impact. And to think that the federal government, who has been promoting sustainable communities and historic downtowns, would even offer anything like that is astounding. I worked in the past with the government when they were doing the renovations over at the Robert Young Building so that they could have updated facilities for federal employees. They have in the past had a history of leasing on a long-term basis from people who would develop property within the inner city to provide the necessary spaces. If you remember, the building that we bought for SLDC was formerly an FBI complex, and they rebuilt it down further west, but still in the downtown core. So this resolution is calling them to task for actually exiting our downtown. And I think that they should be put on notice, that people are watching. We do want jobs in our city, and we consider ourselves partners with them on many things, and we would appreciate their respect for the fact that jobs are important to us. We have built transit here to accommodate them, and we want to keep those jobs in our city. So with that, I would ask for favorable passage of this resolution.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 7th, seconded by Alderwoman from the 15th, and we adopt Resolution number 251. Alderwoman from the 19th, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I just wanted to make a comment on behalf of us and how we move forward. It's nice to have a resolution, but what is the action that is going to take place? I happen to know that because of the delay of the move, that they have already outgrown that building out there. So if that move even happens, are we prepared? Have we done our-- looked at our inventory? Have we offered some other options? I'd be happy to be a part of a committee like that. Every time I drive down Manchester and I look at that massive, empty mall space there, it would be nice to offer something that new to someone for a retrofit. So there's a lot of opportunity here, and I hope we take advantage of that and not just talk about it. So that's all I wanted to say. I just want us to be proactive and not just allow them to do what they need to, what they want to do, which they've waited so long that they've technically outgrown the building. So I hope that we do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the 3rd.
President, Members of the Board, I would suggest that all of us sign off on this resolution. Because when it comes to moving jobs and taking away from the city, what the city has done for so much is just harmful, hurtful, and I just don't quite understand why it is now that the city is beginning to turn the corner. I got so much development going on along the Salisbury Strip over there, and there's so much going on in the city of St. Louis. Now to come and take any of the jobs out of the city of St. Louis, which has been hurt for so long, I think they should be coming back. So many of the jobs that have left the city and gone elsewhere, I think they need to come back to the city, and I support the resolution.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 21st or 23rd? He's yielding to y'all. Yeah. Wonder if it's appropriate time to ask that we do it in bank? No, it's perfect. It's been moved that we do it in bank by Alderman from the 23rd, entertain a second. Seconded by Alderman from the 3rd. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the 24th.
Mr. President, I do need to just briefly correct the Alderman from the 19th. I think she's referring to the St. Louis marketplace. Many people think that's vacant. It's not. It's 100% occupied. Over 1,000 people work in that space, including Weisman Dancewear, which is the largest domestic manufacturer of dancewear in the country, employs over 600 people in that location. So just want to point that out so we don't perpetuate that inaccuracy. But what I wanted to talk about, where this building and where these people work right now is located, there are well over a dozen Metro and MetroLink lines to this location. And as we all know, many of Metro's bus lines and the train lines converge on downtown. It gives people, wherever they live throughout the region or in Illinois, really have access on public transit to work where they are now. The location in Overland, which is on Page Avenue, has a single bus line, which does not run very frequently. And really, you know, there is federal investment into public transit in St. Louis, and it's really counterproductive to make the investment and then move jobs where there is no public transit service. So I would, you know, wholeheartedly concur with the Alderman from the 7th's resolution in this case.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 7th, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 7th, seconded by Alderwoman from the 15th, that we adopt Resolution number 251. It's been amended in bank. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
We will dispense one line item 22, miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements?
There are no meetings next week. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I wanted to clarify one thing. When we were talking about the repeal of the amusement tax on concerts, the reason for the confusion is looking at the ordinance, it was sponsored jointly by Alderman McGuire and Alderman Beckerly. So that was the reason for the confusion. Sorry about that.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I'd like to have my special guest, Committee Man Ed McValery from the 4th Ward.
All right. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 19th.
Members of the Board, I just had a few announcements for recognizing new businesses that are opening in the 19th Ward. Today, the opening of The Dark Room Wine Bar and Gallery at 615 North Grand. It's a very nice spot. It's directly across the street from the St. Louis Symphony, and I wish them well in their endeavor. Tonight, there will be an opening for The Majestic at 1911 Locust. That facility has been through a lot over the last few years, but it has a good owner now and a good business structure, and I'm looking forward to their success. Also coming soon and opening in the next few weeks at 215 South Grand at Highway 40 in the Council Plaza, we'll have a Snarfs Restaurant there, so that will join the Starbucks and the Cini Italian food places there. Also, I wanted to give a shout out to musicians that participate in Fringe. If you all are not familiar with St. Louis Fringe Festival, a young lady that relocated here from California, Emmy Pro, organized a Fringe Festival that is held mostly on the West Coast, and it involves all kinds of actors, musicians, or whatever, from all over this town. So they're going to have a production next Friday night of an adult version of Alice in Wonderland at the Cranberries Theatre, and that's at 7:00 PM. And when I say adult version, that means that not only would it be a theater production with dance and music, but it'll have a visual art puppetry show, it'll have burlesque and spoken word. And also, just a reminder, oh, of course it is. And then I wanted to give a shout out to one of the musicians who found his way to our area, and he performed at an event, and now he's been booked at like three different events in our area, and he's going to be at The Dark Room tonight. And that's Maurice Exton. He's a great, great pianist. Everybody knows him as Mo. So I'm excited that he's going to be at The Dark Room. Thank you.
All right. Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 14th.
Yes, I would like to wish everyone a Happy St. Patrick's Day. I would also like everyone to know that Noco Skating Shop is having their groundbreaking on their skate park at 4427 Morgan Ford Road at Osceola tomorrow at noon. I invite any skating enthusiasts to come on down and see how it's going to be built and enjoy some good fun.
Excellent. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Also, the license, I was just passing note, the License Collector is offering lessons in tax preparation for small businesses on Tuesday, March 25th, from 7:30 to 9:30. And they're going to cover do's and don'ts, how to file amendments, tax write-offs, and new laws related to the, all the new tax laws. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
I'm sorry, I am Alderwoman from the 28th. We're in deep discussion about where we're going to have lunch today. Seriously, I'm teasing. We were trying to figure out something back here, a little more important than that. But in addition to my own absence today at the meeting, that was meant to be a joke, the, I move that we excuse the Alderpersons from the 2nd, 4th, and 27th Ward.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move that we adjourn signed aye until April the 14th.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 14th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? He's not adjourned and signed aye. Motion to adjourn. Stand to adjourn.